I believe now we're moving to item 35, the Domain Awareness.
Yes, to adopt a resolution authorizing the city administrator to accept, appropriate, and administer up to $2 million of American Recovery and Reinvestment Supplemental Port Security Grant Funds for PSGP fiscal years 2009 and 2010. And enter into a memorandum of understanding and grant administration agreement with the Port of Oakland to distribute and expend said funds of Phase Two for the system, approve the City of Oakland's preliminary spending plan, amend the city's contract with science applications international, and waiving the competitive request for proposal qualifications and advertising bidding requirements. There are 50 speakers on this item?
Thank you very much. And who's, yes, it's going to be one minute per speaker, but you can consolidate time. If a group wishes to put your time together, you can have one person consolidate time from multiple people and speak on behalf of a group. So you will have that option. And city administrator? City administrator? Who's going to be doing the report on this item? Thank you so much. Good evening, Renee, and welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Renee Domingo. I'm with the City of Oakland Fire Department, and I'm the Emergency Services Manager. Before you, we have a supplemental report that was requested at the last council meeting regarding the FY0910 Port Security Grant Award of $2 million to embark upon Phase Two of the Domain Awareness Center. And the City Council requested the staff return and provide a timeline concerning the project, Phase Two, and how we would ensure that some of the concerns that were raised at the last meeting would be addressed moving forward on Phase Two. As you will see on page three of your council report, there is a timeline set forth with key milestones and the month and year. So upon council approval, we would request to start Phase Two contract negotiations with the vendor of this project that has done Phase One. We would hope to enter into a contract with them no later than September of 2013 to begin the development of Phase Two of this project. Phase Two includes the development of policies and procedures relative to the Domain Awareness Center, relative to video and data retention policies, as well as ensuring that the data is safeguarded, as well as privacy rights are maintained. Once we enter into the contract and the project actually starts, the main components of Phase Two are to develop the workflows and action processes for our port and city stakeholders. And those port and city stakeholders include police and fire. And what those workflows look like is basically, for each type of an event, whether it's a fire, an earthquake, a hazardous materials incident, crime that's committed, intrusion at the port, a terrorist event, we would develop a workflow that shows how, if something was spotted in the Domain Awareness Center, who needs to be contacted, what is the workflow? We would contact, for example, police dispatch, fire dispatch. We may need to contact other agencies if it was a hazardous materials incident. We may need to contact EPA, et cetera. So we'd have a set of rules for each type of incident. Once we develop those workflows, those would be incorporated into the software system. Then the next phase would be to start to develop a memorandum of agreement with the port and the city on the operations and maintenance of the center, because we don't have an agreement for Phase Two of the project. Once that was done, then we would start to, over that time, we'd also be looking at external agencies that we might want to incorporate as part of Phase Two. And primarily, because this is a port security grant, we will be focusing on port-centric agencies. So we would be looking at the other transportation agencies as part of Phase Two. That could include Caltrans, BART, AC Transit for Phase Two of the project, and looking at entering into agreements with them to receive their information, their video feeds related to their transportation arteries that are in Oakland specific. The next part of the process, as we go along, and this would be in conjunction with everything else that we're doing, would be to start to research and develop the DAC system-specific policies and guidelines regarding data and video retention, records retention, and safeguarding of data. And we would be doing that research and developing those policies with our steering group. We also are open to inviting external policy holders, including the ACLU and other privacy experts, to ensure that we meet all of the criteria that's needed. And we'd like to do that over the period of November through February. We would like to bring back those policies and procedures to City Council for approval and review in March of 2014. Once the City Council reviews and approves those policies, the public will also have an opportunity to make comment regarding those policies. Then, once that's approved, then we would move forward with the final implementation of Phase Two, which would be to start doing all the system integrations, the testing, acceptance testing of the system, and we would be actually ready to be operational by July 1st, 2014. This timeline is based upon approval by the City Council tonight. Should the City Council defer that approval, then we would have to look at what that timeline might look like and whether or not the grant funding would be able to still be available, because the timeline on the grant is by June 30th, 2014, for a portion of the Port Security Grant.
Thank you very much. And I want to assure the public that all of, everyone who signed up will have an opportunity to speak, and everyone is urged to listen respectfully to all speakers. Before we go to the public speakers, I wanted to check if any council members had any questions or comments that you'd like to mention before the public speakers. Councilmember Kalb.
Thank you, President Protam Kaplan. I think we'll have a lengthy discussion amongst us after we hear from all the speakers. It's important to hear what people have to say before we have our deliberation. But I also thought it's very important that, before people speak, that they know, or they have the opportunity at least, and they know about a series of amendments, or a package, or a sheet of amendments that council members Gibson, McElhaney, Councilmember Schaff, and I have put together to add to the resolution to address some of the concerns in the process going forward. So I want to read those out loud, and then instead of explaining them in detail or advocating for them, we should really hear from the public, and then we could have our discussion. So I'll just, and I think there are copies in the audience. I hope there are. If those of you upstairs, you can come down and get a copy here. So in the whereas, we will be adopting a resolution, or at least considering adopting a resolution, that is in the packet and, of course, made public with the grant and such. What this proposal, what this amendment, if you will, is to add one whereas clause and three resolved clauses as follows. Whereas the city wants to ensure that, insofar as it could result in the collection or retention of information about Oakland residents who have not engaged in any wrongdoing, that the city develops and adopts appropriate safeguards, procedures, policies, and implementation plans, hereafter referred to as the Privacy and Data Retention Policy, to protect the privacy rights of individuals and ensure public confidence in the operation of the City-Port Joint Domain Awareness Center. And then the resolves would be, the following resolved clauses would be added to what's already in the resolution. During Phase Two, City-Port staff will develop a Privacy and Data Retention Policy that governs the collection, retention, storage, and dissemination of information processed by the DAC, ensuring the protection of privacy rights of individuals, and will return said policy to the, and will return said policy to the council for approval no later than March 2014. And the further resolve, the City-Port Joint Domain Awareness Center System Video Data Recording and Storage Capability has not been activated and shall not be activated until the City Council approves the Privacy and Data Retention Policy for the City-Port Domain Awareness Center. And then further resolved, City-Port Joint DAC, Phase One and Two includes data and video feeds from the following surveillance, security sensor, and video analytics sources only: port video and intrusion detection cameras, Port of Oakland Vessel Tracking System, City of Oakland Traffic Cameras, I think there are just four or five of them, City of Oakland owned cameras operated by the city in non-residential areas, City of Oakland Shot Spotter Audio Sensor System that already exists in the city, and the License Plate Recognition System. And that any addition, and that the addition of any new surveillance, security sensor, or video analytics feed, or data sources shall require approval of the council, including confirmation of compliance with the city's soon-to-be, or yet-to-be, Privacy and Data Retention Policy. So I'd be happy to talk more about it and explain in more detail, you know, what we're all thinking, but I think we should probably hear from the speakers first.
Okay, thank you for that. And I just wanted to pose a question to the city attorney, and if necessary, perhaps we can answer it after the speakers, so you can have time to check on it, which is my understanding is that, under the court order that we are under with regard to the negotiated settlement agreement, it's my understanding that we are required to check any new policies or procedures for law enforcement have to be run by the Compliance Director prior to implementation? And so maybe if I'll just plant the question, you can think about it and answer it after the public speakers, but I want to make sure that we're taking that into account as well, that under the negotiated settlement agreement, unless you want to speak to it now, that my understanding is that we are required to get the Compliance Director's sign off on any new policies or procedures.
So this will be viewed as a new initiative, because the Oakland Police Department is participating in part of the operation of the CAD. So I would view this as a new initiative, a new program that would warrant Compliance Director review.
Thank you very much for that. Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so at this point, we will call the speakers. Thank you.
As I call your name, please approach the podium. Ed Pio, Mary Madden, David Bobuck, Alexis Madrigal, Lisa Lai, Leslie Drier, Mindy Stone, David Colburn, Karen Smolovitz, Daniel Borgstrom, Kaylee Roberts, Tracy Rosenberg, Edgar Tukuro, and I'll pause there.
Please come to the center mic. Oh, yeah, we haven't called all the speakers yet. There's quite a lot of speakers. We'll be calling a great, longer list continuing forward. If your name's been called already, please come line up in front of the center podium. Thank you. And if you are consolidating time from other people, please let us know, and we'll add that to your time.
I am. From Heather, what's the last name? What is it?
LaMastro.
LaMastro. And Ben Valentine.
Great, so three minutes, please. Thank you.
Okay. Let me just scroll up here, sorry. Okay, oops. I haven't started yet. Can I have my complete? Sorry, I'm having difficulty. The history of, I'm sorry, my name is Mindy Stone. I live in West Oakland. The history of the DAC should be thoroughly examined before voting on item number 35. According to OaklandWiki.org website, the history of the DAC claims to have been started back in 2008. Looking onto, into the linked PDF dated July 8th, 2008, which is an informational report from the OPD to the Public Safety Committee, there is not one mention of the Domain Awareness Project. This document, called Oakland Police Camera System, cites the purpose of this program to supplement the OPD efforts to provide safe public environment in which to conduct business transit, transit public spaces, and enjoy city neighborhoods with minimal fear of crime. There are many studies on camera monitoring that prove that cameras do not prevent crime. The ACLU has a report detailing the facts. The Oakland Police Camera System is nothing like what the DAC program is about. DAC was initiated in 2009 to protect the Port of Oakland from terrorist attacks. The DAC was started with American Recovery Reinvestment Act port and security grant program funding. The Port of Oakland, not the City of Oakland, accepted the grant funding in 2010. However, the City of Oakland selected SAIC to implement the DAC project. How that decision was made, I'd be interested in knowing. A side note about SAIC. SAIC is deeply involved in the operations of all major collection agencies, particularly the NSA and CIA. The SAIC, for example, managed one of the NSA's largest efforts in recent years, $3 billion project called Project Trailblazer, which attempted and failed to create actionable intelligence from a cacophony of telephone calls, fax messages, and emails that the NSA picks up every day. Launched in 2001, Trailblazer experienced hundreds of millions of dollars in cost overruns, and the NSA canceled it in 2005. Returning to the DAC project, SAIC fell behind on the project this June, which is why they are now having to ask for more money. Does anyone else feel that there's a financial reason not to allow DAC to expand out into Oakland, given who is asking for more money? According to the DAC Strategic Plan Alignment Goals, in their words, "Goal F: aggressively obtain maximum amount of external grant and government funding and regulatory relief." That means get as much taxpayer dollars as possible while eliminating regulations on surveillance systems and operations. And this security project is 100% grant-funded, with the exception of port staff and overhead costs. So how much will this cost Oakland taxpayers over the short and long term? My last statement, opening this Pandora's Box on an already broke federal government and severely stressed Oakland City General Fund situation is reckless at best and criminal at worst. Don't rip off the taxpayers on this project, no on item 35.
I'm an Oakland community member opposed to the DAC, increased surveillance, and more infringements on our civil liberties. Governments claim security for their justification for civil liberties abuses, but overwhelmingly, the security in question is that of the state from its own populations. The DAC will track our every move. They say that we want specifics on guidelines, but that's, we don't, you don't have specifics on guidelines. You can't expect the public to trust that you will actually protect our Fourth Amendment When we've learned enough from the NSA, that's been storing all of our data already. The DAC's initial intent was to increase port security. What does this expansion have to do with port security? On the national and local level, our governments need to shift their priorities and resources to address the roots of society's problems, and militarization and surveillance are not the answer. Let's not let Oakland become a model for an ever-expanding militarized police state. Let's make sure our youth grow up with their Fourth Amendment rights intact. That means we have to reject the DAC, roll back the Patriot Act. Let's make sure there's no more unarmed 22-year-olds are shot in the back as the cops respond using even more advanced surveillance. Let's dream big, imagine that we could do, what we could do with $10.9 million. Thank you.
I'm a district true resident. I think a month after the NSA revelations of abusive surveillance practices by the government against its own citizens, it's really amazing you would decide to aggregate all the city's feeds into one system and worry about the privacy issues later, which is basically what you're doing. As you know, the Oakland government has a huge accountability problem, whether it's the police, or as we saw last week, the City Council itself is, you know, unable to hold itself accountable for any wrongdoing. And the question with a system like this isn't whether abuses will happen, it's how often they'll happen, and what's going to be done about it, et cetera. And to have that discussion after the thing is built is just outrageous. Thanks.
My name is Lynda Lai, and I'm a staff attorney with the ACLU of Northern California. Miguel Vargas and Ed Pio have also graciously ceded their time to me, so I would request, sorry?
Joshua Daniels.
And Joshua Daniels, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to need the names, I'm sorry.
Miguel Vargas, Ed Pio, Joshua Daniels, Edgar Torrego, thank you all very much. The DAC raises enormous privacy concerns because it would allow for the warrantless and comprehensive surveillance of Oakland residents who have engaged in no wrongdoing whatsoever. This raises grave privacy and associational concerns under our federal and state constitution. And I want to touch briefly on why the DAC is so intrusive, and why you must stand up for privacy. First, we've been hearing a lot about how this simply just, it does nothing more than combine existing surveillance systems. The intent is clearly to pull over 1,000 cameras throughout the city and the Port of Oakland, including 700 cameras in Oakland schools. This aggregation of information is far more intrusive than any one of these systems standing alone. Think of a mosaic. The mosaic paints a very detailed picture that an individual tile would not. And that is why the aggregation of information is itself inherently intrusive and privacy-invasive. It's not clear how surveilling schoolchildren, however, would make us safer. Documents from the port also show that the intent is not just to aggregate existing surveillance systems, but also to add video analytics. Facial recognition and other sophisticated surveillance tools can be used to identify and track specific individuals when they go to the union hall meeting, when the questioning youth goes to the gay and lesbian resource center, when the young frightened woman goes to the abortion clinic, and other, and identify specific individuals when they engage in other very personal acts. At the same time, study after study has shown that surveillance systems do not make us safer, but have the potential for discrimination. Studies from the United Kingdom, where CCTV, closed-circuit television, is far more pervasive, have repeatedly shown that it does not result in a net crime deterrent. You can engage in more effective policing through safer measures, through less privacy-invasive, less costly measures like increased street lighting. The studies consistently show they do not, that CCTV does not generally reduce crime. At the same time, the studies also show that people of color are two and a half times more likely to be targeted by CCTV, that one in 10 women is monitored for purely voyeuristic reasons unrelated to security. So we have the potential for discrimination, we have no increase in safety, and we have tremendous privacy invasions. It is our strong recommendation that you not put the cart before the horse, and that you not allow the DAC to proceed to Phase Two without fully vetting the privacy issues. That is our strong urging. We also understand that you have, that several council members have provide, have proposed some additional language to the resolution, and the additional steps would be a marked improvement, but we want to identify a couple things as, which at a minimum, we urge you to do. First, the DAC. DAC should not be authorized to operate or store any information until such time as the council reviews and approves a privacy policy. This is the first be-it-resolved paragraph, the first and second be-it-resolved paragraphs in the proposed amended resolution, and that is helpful. But we also urge you to take the further step and to consider the fact that all of the sources that would feed the DAC also need to have privacy policies in place. And I know that some of you are thinking that, but if that could be expressly addressed, that is also important, because if we're not storing it in the DAC, but we're storing it elsewhere, the same problem exists. Second, express City Council approval should be required for inclusion or the addition of each source of surveillance or security sensor data. This is addressed in part in the third paragraph. And this is essential, because it means that the City Council, elected officials, will be deciding whether it makes sense to actually surveil Oakland schoolchildren, rather than delegating that decision to unelected, unaccountable administrators. So that is a helpful thing. However, we would urge you to consider removing automated license plate readers from that paragraph of one of the sources that is approved for inclusion in the DAC, because of the pervasive surveillance that ALPRs provide for. Thirdly, and this is also very essential, is the issue of video analytics. As I mentioned earlier, facial recognition and other sophisticated analytics allow for the tracking of specific individuals and where they go and what they do. Now, you've referenced video analytics in the third be-it-resolved paragraph, but it should probably be moved to the second. Video analytics is a capability, it is not a source. So given the level of public, the strong public sentiment and the importance of buying community trust, I think it's important, the devil is always in the details, the wording needs to be very precise. So we urge you to stand up for privacy and not to let the cart before the horse, no blank checks. Thank you very much.
Ms. Lai. I'm sorry. I guess I can ask her, I could ask her to return later, but sometimes we ask people questions while they're still there.
I was going to say, now we have a number of speakers, so if she could just clarify that one piece before, if Ms. Lai could just, I don't want to lose the recommendation that she just made.
Some of the council members have wanted to follow up on your recommendations, and thank you for your very thoughtful words. Councilmember McElhaney.
Thank you, Madam Protam. Ms. Lai, when you're referencing the relocation of video analytics, you would put that in the second further resolve?
Yes, and so that-
And how would it read?
The City/Port Joint Domain Awareness Center System Video Data Recording, delete the and, comma, Storage, comma, and Video Analytics Capability has not been activated and shall not be activated until the City Council approves the Privacy and Data Retention Policy.
Thank you. Stay at the mic. Councilmember Schaff has a question for you.
I'm sorry, excuse me, we're going to respect everybody here. Councilmember Schaff.
So first of all, I wanted to thank you for spending time with us prior to tonight and making your expertise available. It's been very helpful in this process. But I just wanted, your comments suggested, you are now aware that this phase does not include OUSD or student feeds, and that's, that is made explicit by the listing and confinement of the sources that are listed in that last paragraph.
So I think that's a helpful addition. Documents provided by the port on their own website, a status report from, I believe it was May, very recently, a few months ago, had a diagram that illustrated the various feeds. One was OUSD. I think it's very helpful that the City Council is specifying that OUSD should not be included, but that illustrates precisely why the privacy issues need to be clarified upfront, otherwise staff could implement a very different, more pervasive surveillance system than the City Council seems prepared to approve.
Okay, so we, I just wanted to clarify, because we were trying to address that concern by actually listing out and enumerating the sources that may be included at this time, with the requirement, as you suggested, that any future sources have to come through the council. So I just, because I know that is of particular concern, so I just wanted to clarify, make sure that you have seen that.
Yes, no, I saw that, thank you.
Okay, thanks. And then I'll have some questions for staff about the recommendations later, but thanks.
Okay, thank you. And now we'll continue with the speakers. And do you have, if you have anyone else sitting your time?
I'm Mary Madden, I have signed up for two items, 35 and 36.
And you're requesting to take them together?
Yes.
Okay, that's two minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name's Mary Madden. I'm from, I'm a member of the Coalition Alameda County Against Drones. I'm speaking tonight, even though I know that most of you on the council have already made up your minds about how you'll vote, as the press has told us. And you're not really considering what the public has to say. Because this issue is being heard in the middle of the night, privacy advocates from the Bill of Rights Defense Committee and the NLG, who came out to speak, had to go home. First off, I think it's a travesty that DHS has tapped our beloved and brave firefighters to become spies for the surveillance state. It's my understanding, it's my understanding that OFD is not a willing participant in the citywide surveillance system. By being put in this position, the fire department will eventually lose the goodwill of the community, and their safety will be at risk. It's not fair to them. You, the City Council, are endangering the Oakland Fire Department by turning them into spies. As Lynda Lai just pointed out- As Linda Lye just pointed out, a study in Great Britain showed that black people were 2.5 times more likely to be surveilled, and 30% of targeted surveillance on black people was protracted, lasting nine minutes or more compared with just 10% on white people. Homeless people were subject to intense surveillance, and one out of 10 women were targeted for voyeuristic reasons by male camera operators. Additionally, we have all read the specs for this project, and we know that there are 700 cameras from public schools that are going to be fed into this system and then sent to fusion centers to watch our children as though they were terrorists. This is unacceptable. You know that surveillance does not reduce crime. You know that surveillance unfairly targets people of color, women, and the poor. You know that you're targeting children. You know now that you're endangering the fire department. I ask you to vote no, but when you vote yes, don't pretend like you didn't know exactly what you were doing.
I will continue to call names. I will continue to call names. Sandy Sanders, Joshua Smith, Carrie Lamprec, Nadia Cale, Janet Coburn, Paul Young, Michael Poon, Khalid Shakur, Cynthia Morris, Patrick Reagan, Mike Chase, Russell Bates, Paul Marufus, Mark Raymond, John Hennenberry, Sarah Lacquer, Troy Massey, Justin Talbot, Bud Helms, Naj Eustis, Jesse Smith, Patty Rich, and Bill Aboudi. I'll pause there.
If you please come up to the mic.
Good evening, folks. My name is Russell Bates. I'm a member of Berkeley Cop Watch. I've been associated with the group for 17 years. There was a poll I read in the last day or two, I was shocked by it. It said, finally, the people of the United States are saying their number-one problem with the government, or their number-one request, their hassle is with surveillance, not terrorism. Surveillance has finally overpowered the terrorism that was pounded into people's minds after 9/11. People are concerned and scared of the surveillance by the government more than terrorists. Now, I have a slight stuffed nose, but I can still smell a load of crap, and this domain awareness is one of the biggest load of crap I've seen and heard in a long time. It seems the choice is the Fourth Amendment or the continuation of a possible fourth right. It's your choice.
My name is Sandy Sanders, I live in West Oakland, and I have another minute from Sarah Lacquer.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm here with a group of about 12 people that wrote you a letter asking you to postpone any decision on this, because we wanted to prepare enough information to prove to you that this system is bogus, it's a rip-off of our rights, and it's going to be a big mistake in the future. What happens when there's a mistake from the system and some idiot kills somebody and you get sued? You want to go through that? You already do this enough as it is. How much more do you want to continue with it? I'm gonna read this article, a recent article from New York and Bloomberg when they had a meeting regarding their new system there. This is April 26, 2013. New York City police officials intend to expand the already extensive use of surveillance cameras throughout the town. New York City Police Department Commissioner Ray Kelly announced the plan during a press conference with Mayor Michael Bloomberg. The pair said they hoped to discourage criminals by using so-called "smart" cameras that will aggregate data from 9/11 alerts, arrest records, mapped crime patterns, surveillance cameras, and radiation detectors, among other tools, according to The Verge. Now, these are the same system that you've adopted. They're making money on that, they make 30% profit, along with Microsoft, on selling this system to you and all the cities that they do sell it to. This is part of the information you need to know before you adopt this, and will you please do not do this. "You're never going to know where all of your cameras are," Bloomberg told reporters outside City Hall, "and that's one of the ways you deter people. They just don't know whether the person sitting next to you is somebody sitting there or a detective watching." Great, this is what the world we want? We want 1984? No, we do not. Kelly said the domain awareness system, nicknamed "The Dashboard," would centralize already existing data captured on between 3,500 and 6,000 cameras already placed throughout the city with new technology developed in conjunction with Microsoft. The project is expected to take three years and cost $40 to $50 million. Then Kelly said, "The privacy issue has really been taken off the table. I don't think people are concerned about it. I think people accept it in a post-9/11 world." I'm sorry, this is not the voiding of the Constitution. This is 1984, this is a disaster. There will be people leaving this country, just like they did in Germany pre-World War II. Do you want that?
Good evening. I'll start with what he said, okay? This is really what you planned. If you don't know it, you really, really need to study up. It seems that almost, we're halfway there anyway before we even knew it. The public policy, privacy sort of things, they're coming after, they're coming after the system set up. That kind of power is never going to be ignored. We've got a police department that hasn't been able to control themselves, just to begin with. The federal government knows this stuff is here. It doesn't matter what public privacy policies, what's the enforcement for that? You know, nobody's going to jail if they violate a privacy of this system. You can't avoid this system. There's no way, and there's so much power in it. There's an incredible amount of power. Nobody's going to ignore that power. That's going to be used. There'll be a different city council, there'll be different people elected. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Chase. I'm with the Board of Directors of the ACLU chapter here in Oakland. I want to just go on a little more about what Linda Lye said about the mosaic. That really is the key thing. When you put together a number of surveillance systems, it's much more than the sum of the parts. When you have this kind of mosaic, you really can learn a great deal about a person's life in a way that intrudes on their privacy. I'll quote from the U.S. Supreme Court, a recent decision on privacy, United States versus Jones of 2012. "The kinds of intimate details of an individual's life can include, quote, 'trips to the psychiatrist, the plastic surgeon, the abortion clinic, the AIDS Treatment Center, the strip club, the criminal defense attorney, the union meeting, the mosque, the synagogue or church, the gay bar,' and on and on." A lot of times when people talk about new technology, they think about heat-sinking cameras and face-recognition technology, but really it is the merging of data that allows you to intrude on privacy in that way. So I urge you to put the privacy policies in place in advance of taking this move.
Hello, my name is Justin Talbot. I stridently oppose the DAC, and I hope that you will too. Oakland has a strong problem trusting the police after numerous breaches of trust by the Oakland police. Now we wish to further empower them with absolutely no oversight? This seems completely unreasonable to me. I know that this decision will have a chilling effect on people that are technologists that would normally move here. We are hyper-aware of these issues, and this is all over the internet right now. And I think that's a shame, because I've grown to love Oakland since I moved here several years ago. I think that we should make Oakland safer, but that happens through urban and economic development plans, not from the police spying on us. Thank you.
Mark Raymond and Paul Marufus also wanted to cede time to me since you had to leave. Thank you. So I am from Oakland, and I live in Oakland, District 5, and I would like to talk a bit about the concept of the Panopticon, since that's what you all are trying to build here, a virtual Panopticon. So a Panopticon is a prison design in which the guard or guards can see every prisoner at all times, but the prisoners cannot see the guard or even know if the guard is watching or there at all. Historically, Panopticons had to be a physical prison, but now through technology, you have the opportunity to apply this to the entire city of Oakland, making us all prisoners. The Domain Awareness Center is the guard tower, which will watch over every person in the city of Oakland. It will watch through thousands of security cameras, et cetera. You know what it's going to watch better than I do, I guess. And the SAIC, which is building DAC, also makes software that can integrate in facial recognition and all these other services to make this Panopticon even more complete. So since this is a joint project with the port, we don't know who's going to be watching us. It could be OPD, it could be Department of Homeland Security, we can assume this will go to the local FBI fusion center, and who knows who else? All of the above, I suppose. So this program is an attempt to criminalize and imprison every person who lives in Oakland or passes through Oakland, be they people walking their dogs, commuters driving down the freeway, or political dissidents. And in our previous encounter with Occupy, we found out that you all had shared a lot of information about what businesses were being targeted during the port shutdown with those businesses and their corporate security, and so I really hope that that's not something that's going to happen again with this program. And so I think that all of us in Oakland need to stand together regardless of what decision you make tonight, and ensure that we're not being constantly stalked by who-knows-who in this virtual guard tower. Thank you.
My name's Patty Rich. I'm with the Department of Public Health. I do not believe that it is in good form to take American Recovery and Reinvestment Act to supply surveillance for companies like Walmart that just ship us a bunch of crap. Do we really need to protect them? Since OPD keeps violating the consent decree already, how is this going to help us? What would this live feed give you, more info about what youth to shoot? I say we should censor Ms. Santana, who keeps interfering with the investigations of OPD.
Jesse Smith, I have eight cards here concerning 35 and 36, which I can combine? What does that turn into? Six? Okay, keep the change.
I will need the names, Jesse, I'm sorry.
Oh, the names. Marissa Ez, right over here, David Heathley, Gwen Winter, and myself. Oh, six minutes? Six minutes, then I'll opt out Gwen's, because she wanted her time donated.
That's fine, you still get six.
Okay. I would just like to point out that this is on the front page of Reddit right now. It's international attention being paid, and the crowd to speak on this has been starved out by placing it towards the end of the day when you knew how important it was. The DAC offer has much in common with the notorious Goldman Sachs deal. In retrospect, the Goldman Sachs deal was a fool's wager, signing to a locked-in interest rate at historic highs to prevent against the incidental detriments of an economy so prosperous it resembles a Randi and Utopia. Just in case the Dow Jones hit 40K, you wouldn't have to pay the interest rates of everyone else. It was a predatory deal, and the city council were the perfect marks, greedy, stars in their eyes, and uneducated in the matter. I understand you're not economists, you're lawyers, and you don't have an IT director. The DAC went through the consent calendar because you don't understand what you're looking at. A few of you said it should not be on consent, but it was voted for unanimously. Calb, I understand you believe in legislative safeguards, but that is laughably naive. Ask a tech. Ask Sergeant Bolton, who established the Nixle database, which is a spy database that currently exists. Did you put that into existence? Was that legislated into existence? It's just a click of a button. That's what you don't understand. The inability to answer obvious questions at the time is embarrassing. It is obvious that you don't know what you're looking at. Now, by the time we're paying for this, it's going to be an obsolete technology. You're going to be paying cray prices for Univac equipment. Government-sponsored technology is also known as bleeding-edge because it hemorrhages money. After the government sponsors it into existence, the private sector then moves in. That's how it works. And we are being targeted by SAIC for this. Oakland is not in a position to finance the next generation of artificial intelligence. You think we have tight funds now? Wait for those unspecified upgrades, which surely the contractor is planning to provide the maintenance for, building those needs into the system. As Reed pointed out, this is a white elephant, a gift with maintenance that will become an unbearable burden. As with the Goldman Sachs deal, this will ultimately hurt Oakland's finances, because you don't understand what you're looking at. Granted, there are many benefits that can come of such a security system, because it's not simply snitch tech. We are not talking about a simple security system. This is the installation of a technological infrastructure of considerable scale. Have you thought about how to optimize that for Oakland? It could be an opportunity to grow Oakland. It could bring in tech workers and industry, but have you even thought to exploit that opportunity? Oakland is a hotbed of hackers and engineers, and you send millions out of town for IT. We could do this locally if you'd like to, grow a tech industry, and even use the key systems building on 11th for a Noelian ministry. Because otherwise, it's just fun for breaking into. There is software that can predict your future location with incredible accuracy, such as Raytheon's Riot software. Look this stuff up. Google it. Raytheon's Riot, and there are incredible privacy issues here. They can actually tell about your health conditions with these cameras, using Eulerian augmentation. Beyond, so this is just beyond your understanding. You don't understand what this is. You shouldn't vote for it, otherwise you're going to get screwed again. This is just, I don't have time to explain how this software works, but it's laughable, but what you're ready to embrace here. Now, concerns of privacy are valid, but the technology itself does not invade privacy, it only grants power. And we could use it to make it impossible for police to lie about their deadly misconduct. And it can be used towards this end, videotape being the only factor assuring the prosecution of many police in far too many cases. The software can be used to predict when officers are likely to commit an offense against the public. If it is true that bad cops are the exception, then they can be spotted with software. The city council neglects police issues, resulting in an incompetent police force. Is this a strategy for funding similar to allowing schools to rot in order to bring in charter schools? Are we redlining the police force in order to pass the buck to the feds and CHP? Is this some kind of hustle for funding? There's a better way. To quote the Gaios Tools of Violence proposal, "There have been demonstrations all over the country in response to the verdict in the George Zimmerman case, yet no other city has experienced the level of violence and destruction we have experienced here in Oakland. Why do you think that is? Is it because we lack that law? Is it because other places have that law? That's absurd. Oakland is distinguished internationally and by the federal government for its corruption, brutality, and racism. That's why we have this problem, and you say nothing to correct the problem." OPD is also unique in its hands-off attitude towards hooligans. I've attended smashy parties where 10 white kids from out of town will walk down the street smashing windows, and OPD stays blocks away. Yet a 16-year-old black kid will get shot in the face by OPD for absolutely nothing at all. Those of us who live and work downtown fend for ourselves, doing the job of police during these smashy events. We do our best to protect historical landmarks, black-owned businesses, and institutions that serve the community, and I'm not proud that I do this, rather I resent the necessity. Shields are not tools of violence and are clearly a statement about the brutality of OPD. It's to mock them. Painting materials are always present at protests, as are carpentry tools, which many of us have on us anyway because we're proles. OPD is not enforcing the law because they are incompetent and corrupt, and your solution is to pass more laws crudely constructed so as to give them more arbitrary power? Are you high? I swear, lemurs could do a better job. And since I have a few seconds left on the clock, I just want the cops to stop following me around and harassing me near my house in West Grand. I've been surrounded. They just do this. It's a harassment thing, which I can appreciate. I harass them every opportunity I get. But I'm not a hooligan, so I shouldn't have to deal with them just bothering me. I mean, they haven't beaten me up or anything, but it's just weird, and there's a few other people who have to endure this.
I live in Central Oakland, that has one of the highest crime rates in this area, and I'm just here to ask, what kind of city do you want to live in? I want to live in a safe place, I want to live in a peaceful place, but investing in surveillance is investing in incarceration. And we know what prisons lead to. We know that prisons lead to more crime, because people come out and it's a cycle of violence that starts over and over again, and part of that is because prisons are highly abusive, and we know that not only- And part of that is because prisons are highly abusive, and we know that not only from recent media, from what one of the largest prisoner strikes in history has brought up, that's just going on right now. And we know how abusive that system is, and that's what's going to happen with the surveillance system. I'm not talking about innocent people who are being monitored, that's horrendous by itself. I'm talking about targeting mostly young, black members of our community. And, I have a second. Should I do that now?
Can you give us the name?
Yeah, that's myself from the, from part three.
Okay.
From the open mic.
Okay, so you want to combine your two speaking opportunities?
Yes.
Well, one more minute.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, prison and surveillance is inherently racist. It targets especially young, black members of our community, and I urge you, instead of investing in surveillance, invest in things that cause peace, and that's investing in social welfare programs, investing in housing, investing in jobs, investing in schools. Don't shut down our schools. Create a climate of trust and of supporting each other in this community, and not targeting people and locking them behind bars, because we all have loved ones behind bars, and everyone who's locked up is one person too much. And I want to end with a sentence where I'm from. We have a sentence that's where there is no justice, there will be no peace, and I urge you to vote against this bill. And I swear, if you don't, you're going to regret it. You're going to regret sparking a fire of resistance against this.
I will call the balance of the names Max Alsette, Sarah Jang, Ayer, Rebecca Ruiz, Sean, Marissa S., Serena Eisenman, I'm sorry, and Jason Murat.
Okay, if your name's been called, please come on up.
Ayer, this is Aviar Datnam. One minute. I would just like you to add one more line, which is, "The city council will not approve any installation of surveillance technology in schools, except with notice during actual school sessions, to the civic studies teachers of all schools, and an invitation for the participation of those who would be surveilled, including those who are not yet emancipated minors."
Hi, I'm Sean. I live in West Oakland. I wanted to say that if you build it, they will come. The NSA has proved that if you build a system like Facebook or Hotmail, the NSA wants in, it wants to know what information you have. This database that you guys are building is going to have analysis of people's gait pattern, how they move, license plate readers, movements. This reveals a lot of very personal information, and you, we won't know for a long time how it's going to be used. I think you should vote no.
My name's Kimber, but Marissa S. wants to give me her time so I can speak, and I also have two speaker cards for Gwen Winter.
Four minutes.
So I was going to sign up to speak earlier for one of the other couple things you guys had on the agenda regarding IT upgrades you're doing for the city. You guys approved tonight to do over $2 million in IT upgrades. I don't know if you guys calculated all the different bills that you guys had that you passed. Some of those things that you guys passed, for example, upgrading email, you guys are spending like $19 million to upgrade your email system. You guys probably have people in Oakland that could do those upgrades for you much less. I don't know if you guys consider that or not. Another thing that you guys passed was a $500,000 contract for a company called Bear Data out of Irvine, California, to upgrade IT systems here in your city. And what I would question about that is, if you even know what companies like Bear Data are doing? They are aggregating data analysis, which this particular item that you're on right now is exactly what it's going to do. It's going to collect a lot of data about people, as it's already been indicated by other speakers, people's traffic activity, where they're frequently going, things like that. These companies take that data, they throw it in databases, they automate based on keywords to collect that data and create profiles of people. I have had the unfortunate experience of being a target of a data company called Bright Planet, who is also based, is actually based in South Dakota. And this company, using social media trackers, has created a criminal profile on me and sent it to DHS. I am not a criminal, I've never had a criminal record, but because of a couple of key words and a couple of my social media tweets, and things that I've posted on the internet, I am now classified by the DHS as a criminal, thanks to an automated aggregator data company called Bright Planet. Bear Data is a very similar data collection agency that does automated aggregation of data. And you guys passed today to work with Bear Data. So I would be concerned with the DAC, at what companies and contractors you're looking to hire, if they are based in Oakland, because you guys just gave $2 million to IT contractors that are not Oakland-based. It's a lot of money going out of your city, and I would be concerned at passing anything at this point that you're not aware of what's going on. Data aggregation and automated aggregation creates a lot of problems for people who are not criminals, who do not even engage in criminal activity like myself. Is it fair to someone like me, because I choose to use social media, to be targeted as a criminal, because a company has been hired by a city to automatically aggregate data that is mass-collected, and it does not have a specific intent, other than let's just throw all this stuff up in the air, up on all the balconies, collect all this data, and then present profiles that have absolutely no basis of any type of validity? I really don't understand. I mean, you guys squabbled for probably about 30, 40 minutes, over $250,000 to take a Goldman Sachs out, which we all can agree needs to happen. But you guys don't want to question $2 million going out of the city to outside contractors for data collection. And now we're on another important issue regarding data collection that will have a huge impact on the citizens of the city and how they are going to be mistreated when they have a false file sitting at DHS calling them a criminal.
My name is Sarah Jang. I've also had time ceded to me by Janet Coburn. I'm a law student at Harvard, and I live here for the rest of the time. This is kind of really interesting to me. What you have going here is going to, if it goes forward, will make for really great discussions in class. This is fascinating stuff. This is on the cutting edge of Fourth Amendment jurisprudence. I don't think you want to be on the cutting edge of Fourth Amendment jurisprudence. Not to mention, I don't think you have really thought through where this will all go. Is this data going to be made available to Fusion Centers? Someone asked, is stuff that's surveilled going to be subject to FOIA requests? There's a lot of unanswered questions, and none of those answers are answers you're going to want to hear. I'm really surprised that this is on the agenda today, given that the NSA surveillance question has even Nancy Pelosi running scared. I think you should really reconsider this. This is a hot-topic issue. It's a bad idea, and you don't want people like me on the other side coming back and revisiting this issue.
Good morning. Bill Aboudi with AB Trucking. I'm actually a tenant on the Army Base. I work on the Army Base. And I'm affected by this. Democracy is great. A lot of the concerns raised here, I agree with. But I'm going to give you a little different spin on this, because we actually use some of the camera feeds that are supplied by the port cameras, and we've talked to the port about this, because we use them for informational issues, like long lines at the terminals, so we can avoid them, safety hazard that we have. And actually, after Thursday's meeting, I almost got into a crash, and I wish I had somebody watching those cameras, because I ran into about 200 cars racing down Maritime Street, and I couldn't do anything, they were doing wheelies. So there's a balance, there's a balance of systems and how people use those systems. So the concerns are valid, but also think of us that need them for safety. Thank you.
Thank you. All names have been called.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who signed up who've not yet gotten a chance to speak? You have a card? Great, please come forward and state your name.
Hi, my name's Jason Mortides. I'm an Oakland citizen, and very recently, the nation and the world have been into a debate on when the surveillance state has gotten out of control and everyone found out about it. And I think that it's really weird that Oakland's voice in that debate is to ratchet up to 11 and jump in with both feet on this, to provide a bunch of information wantonly to three-letter agencies that no one trusts, the DHS, the NSA, and the OPD. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers who've signed up? Please come forward and state your name.
I signed up online, you called my name earlier. Hi, my name is Patrick Regan.
Okay.
I'm kind of wearing this as a joke, but then again, maybe it's not a joke. I'm not sure if it's a joke. Is this a joke? So, as you know, many states now even forbid smiling too widely when you get your driver's license picture taken, because it interferes with facial recognition technology. That's certainly not the only concern that anyone should have with smiling, because smiling is a whole nother issue. But when we're in public space in our own city, we shouldn't have to worry about being watched when we're not doing anything wrong. We shouldn't have to feel that we need to conceal our identities for personal reasons that have nothing to do with the law. And even if we do agree with those things, I don't think anyone really here agrees that this isn't really about money and fear. That's what it's really about in the end. It's about us fearing each other, us being afraid of things that aren't really happening, and it's about people making a lot of money off that. So I urge you to not pass the DAC.
Okay, that is all the public speakers at this point have had the opportunity to speak, and so we will return to questions and comments from councilmen. I'm sorry, it looks like we have one more person. You have a speaker card? Please come to the mic. Come on up and state your name.
Hi, I'm Mo Groul, and I'm really confused about why you guys are doing this. This is like, doesn't make any sense. Like, Oakland's not even that big, and like, the violent crime in America's been going down for like the last like 20 years, and this just seems like there's so many cheaper and easier ways to like deal with like youth crime than like putting like this elaborate like Star Wars-style surveillance thing for like, what? Like fucking 500 criminals versus a city of fucking 400,000 people that don't do anything? It doesn't, I don't get it. Like, it just doesn't make any sense. I mean, shit, at least like, like you guys don't even have that many, like, I don't, why are you spending $4 million, $10 million on this? There's like, the schools here suck. Like, fucking like, Oakland sucks, kind of, and that's like on the real. You guys have really bad social services, and you guys are spending it on this bullshit.
Thank you.
I'm moving from here.
Hello, my name is Javier Reyes. I was kidnapped, and I was beating the fuck out of him on East 18th and Lakeshore. They videoed the cams. The guys that jumped me, they said they had a contract from the Oakland Police, they were there to fill the contract. They prosecuted me, pressed charges on me, they broke both of my kneecaps, tore my hamstrings, and I never got none of the video. They beat the shit out of my homeboy right here at Snow Park. If anybody was there, they remember that. There's no footage. Why do you want to put these fucking cameras up? You ain't got no fucking footage. They're using that shit to prosecute us, and so they can get away with it. That's all it is. I want my $130 million. You guys want some fun? Don't pay me my money. I want my money. I want my $130 million that the Department of Defense gave me to murder my father. My family said, "Go there, show them how we are." I worked my ass off better than anybody. That was the number-one company in the world. I want my $130 million. Sign that fucking check right now. Ain't nobody playing with your fucking people. Fucking dumbass. What's to take a fucking first-grade education and get the job? I want my money. There's a whole lot of us thinking about it. You guys are out here telling us how to live our lives. You guys built a fucking bridge, a fucking immigration thing in Mexico, a wall. Are you not Nazi Germany? Who's your fucking citizens? Where do you motherfuckers come from?
Thank you, sir.
You guys are fucking tryouts trying to run me over every fucking day on the lake.
And so, councilors, good evening, ma'am. Did you sign up for this item?
You know, I actually signed up for 36. I don't know.
Yes, did you want to speak at this time?
Well, am I the only one? Because I don't think any-
Yeah, we've already called all the speakers.
Oh, you did.
So it's all you. For, oh, no, but I'm sorry, she wants-
You see, I'm not a year old.
Did you want to take your time at this point, or do you want to wait for the next item?
Next time? I'll do it now.
Okay, one minute.
Because I want them to hear, mine is a little bit different.
Excellent. Well, and you spend so much time with us, I respect you as well. Thank you, go ahead.
Barbara Tengieri. Prohibiting tools of violence during demonstrations authored by Councilmember Noel Gallo? Thank you very much. I agree with you 100%. Too bad we waited until a waiter who was trying to prevent windows broken by protesters at the restaurant that he works at was hit on the head with a hammer. Thank God he's back to work. I went to see him a couple of days ago, and he's doing okay. But let's suppose paralysis or death occurred with the hammer, that would be attempted murder I say bring on the Oakland Police and other law enforcement agencies, and the video cameras. Breaking of private and public properties has gone on much too long. I've had just about enough of it.
Thank you, Ms. Tengieri.
And this is, this is what I'd like to say.
Ma'am, your time has expired.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so I've made a few enemies in here, and that's okay.
Thank you very much, everyone, for your comments. And so now we'll come back, councilmembers, further comments or questions. And thank you, and now I have an acued councilmember called.
Thank you, Madam President Pro Tem, Kathleen. So based on one of the speakers, I wanted to add some words to the handout that was passed out with the additional further-resolve clauses. And so if I can, I'll just do that verbally, and then we could write, make sure we write it down, I mean, you know, when it's all final. So in the, in the third paragraph, which is the second further-resolve clause, it would now read as follows, and I'll read it slowly. "The City Port Joint Domain Awareness Center System Video Data Recording, comma, Storage and Video Analytics Capability Has Not Been Activated and Shall Not Be" and video analytics capability has not been activated and shall not be activated until the City Council approves the privacy and data retention policy for the City Port Domain Awareness Center and all city and port data and info sources. That's that paragraph. And the last part was right where, at the end, right before the semicolon, where it says Domain Awareness Center, then it would say, "And all city and port data and info sources," the sources that come into the domain. I don't have Caltrans on here because that's a state agency. We can't do that. So, and then the last paragraph, the additional language there would be, well, the first part's fine, towards the end where it says, "And that the addition of any," if you see towards the end there, "and that the addition of any new surveillance, comma, security sensor, or video analytics capability," adding the word capability, "feed or data sources" and so on. And then, and then again, it would say, "including confirmation of compliance by the DAC or Domain Awareness Center and all city and port data and information sources," same from the previous paragraph. So that was the, based on what I heard here, that was some, from one of the speakers, that's, I wanted to add that in there to this amended resolution.
Thank you very much. And next in the queue, I have Councilmember Gibson McElhany.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem. I have a few questions. I, when I'm a little more awake, I try to aggregate them so they might be a little scattered and redundant. There was mention from one of the speakers tonight that there's an assessment of 1,000 cameras and that this would be aggregated across the city. If Mr. Mingo can specify what the number of cameras are that we're looking at being covered by the DAC.
My understanding is Phase 2 of this project, which is before you, will be looking at the port cameras, which are approximately 130 to 134 cameras. And there are currently four City of Oakland traffic cameras that are existing that would be integrated into the system, as well as consideration in talking with BART, AC Transit, and Caltrans about cameras that are either in the City of Oakland or bordering the freeways of the City of Oakland. And I'm not sure how many cameras they actually have. I don't know where the number of 1,000 comes from, but that may be coming from the school district cameras that I've heard some of the speakers talk about, 700 cameras with the schools. That component is not recommended or a part of Phase 2 of this project.
So the—
1,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, 8,000, 9,000, 10,000, 11,000, 12,000, 13,000, 14,000,
15,000, 16,000, 17,000, 18,000, 19,000, 20,000, 21,000, 22,000, 23,000, 24,000, 25,000, 26,000, 27,000, 28,000, 29,000, 30,000, 31,000, 32,000, 33,000, 34,000, 35,000, 36,000, 37,000, 38,000, 39,000, 40,000, 41,000, 42,000, 43,000, 44,000, 45,000, 46,000, 47,000, 48,000, 49,000, 50,000, 320,000, 321,000, 322,000, 323,000, 324,000, 325,000, 326,000, 327,000, 328,000, 329,000, 330,000, 331,000, 222,000, 223,000, 224,000, 225,000, 226,000, 227,000, 228,000, 229,000, 230,000, 231,000, 232,000, 51,000, 52,000, 53,000, 54,000, 55,000, 56,000, 57,000, 58,000, 59,000, 60,000, 61,000, 62,000, 63,000, 64,000, 65,000, 66,000, 67,000, 68,000, 69,000, 70,000, 71,000, 72,000, 73,000, 74,000, 75,000, 76,000, 77,000, 78,000, 79,000, 80,000, 81,000, 82,000, 83,000, 84,000, 85,000, 86,000, 233,000, 234,000, 235,000, 236,000, 237,000, 238,000, 239,000, 240,000, 241,000, 242,000, 243,000, 87,000, 88,000, 89,000, 90,000, 91,000, 92,000, 93,000, 94,000, 95,000, 96,000, 97,000, 98,000, 99,000, 100,000, 101,000, 102,000, 103,000, 104,000, 105,000, 106,000, 107,000, 108,000, 109,000, 244,000, 245,000, 246,000, 247,000, 248,000, 249,000, 250,000, 251,000, 252,000, 253,000, 254,000, 110,000, 111,000, 112,000, 113,000, 114,000, 115,000, 116,000, 117,000, 118,000, 119,000, 120,000, 121,000, 122,000, 123,000, 124,000, 125,000, 126,000, 127,000, 128,000, 129,000, 130,000, 131,000, 255,000, 256,000, 257,000, 258,000, 259,000, 260,000, 261,000, 262,000, 263,000, 264,000, 265,000, 132,000, 133,000, 134,000, 135,000, 136,000, 137,000, 138,000, 139,000, 140,000, 141,000, 142,000, 154,000, 155,000, 156,000, 157,000, 158,000, 159,000, 160,000, 161,000, 162,000, 163,000, 164,000, 266,000, 267,000, 268,000, 269,000, 270,000, 271,000, 272,000, 273,000, 274,000, 275,000, 276,000, 162,000, 163,000, 164,000, 165,000, 166,000, 167,000, 168,000, 169,000, 170,000, 171,000, 172,000, 173,000, 174,000, 175,000, 176,000, 177,000, 178,000, 179,000, 180,000, 181,000, 182,000, 183,000, 181,000, 182,000, 183,000, 184,000, 185,000, 186,000, 187,000, 188,000, 189,000, 190,000, 191,000, 277,000, 278,000, 279,000, 280,000, 281,000, 282,000, 283,000, 284,000, 285,000, 286,000, 287,000, 191,000, 192,000, 193,000, 194,000, 195,000, 196,000, 197,000, 198,000, 199,000, 200,000, 201,000, 288,000, 289,000, 290,000, 291,000, 292,000, 293,000, 294,000, 295,000, 296,000, 297,000, 300,000,
should approve the resolution tonight, then we would be looking to staff the facility on a 24/7 basis.
And would the staffing... The staffing that is contemplated, Ms. Domingo, would that staffing, that's covered by the grant, or that would be an additional staffing cost that is shared between the port and the city?
We have currently applied for port security funding for the staffing portion of the Domain Awareness Center. So we are looking at grant funds to support the Domain Awareness Center for up to two years.
And those would be federal grant funds paying for port or city staff, or a combination thereof?
A combination of both.
And you would know whether or not you have the staffing capacity, when would you know whether or not you received the...
We submitted the proposals, they're in, they have been submitted to the regional body, and now they're going up to the federal body. So we would know by next year, mid-next year, whether or not our application has been accepted and approved.
So if you can explain, I don't recall us talking specifically in committee with respect to 24/7 monitoring. So make the case for what would be going on in the DAC for 24/7 monitoring.
Okay, it was actually in the staff report that went to public safety, before it came to city council, the week prior to that. And basically, we would have a representative from the port at that facility, a representative from the police department, and we'd also need an emergency planning coordinator that would be looking at the functionality of the system and how it's being used on a day-to-day basis. The idea is that we would be monitoring critical infrastructure in the port area, since those are where the primary cameras are, between 130 and 134, along the port properties and their perimeter, and also the cameras that are there that are city cameras. There's four city traffic cameras that are near the airport and the port area.
When this item was brought to the Public Safety Committee, we specifically addressed the concern of facial recognition technology. Can you please clarify the capability of the system and what you see in terms of the capacity of the system going forward?
I am not the technology person, but my understanding is, and I will also defer to Mr. Bag, is that currently the system does not have that capability.
If Mr. Bag wants to speak today.
I'm Sean Bag, Department of Information Technology. We don't have the facial recognition capability. Neither we have the facial recognition, nor we have anything on the roadmap.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bag, I couldn't hear you.
Neither we have the facial recognition technology, nor we have the facial recognition technology on the roadmap for the integration.
So the DAC has contemplated right now, in this 24-month period, does not have the capacity to do facial recognition, nor are you seeking to include facial recognition technology?
That is correct.
So can you describe how the information will be used and what information is gathered in the DAC?
In the DAC, I think as Renee was talking about, the whole infrastructure, really, protection. The issue we have in OPD and OFD is that, you know, we have a number of different disparate systems. These are all operational systems. So a responder responding to a 911 call, or a firefighter responding to a fire, the challenge we have is that that individual has to look into three, four, five, or seven different applications. And that severely impacts the performance as far as the response time is concerned. So this Domain Awareness Center, the core of the DAC is the software, which we call Pisin, which is the Physical Security Information Management System. It's not a software which is built by, you know, DOD, or DHS, or DOJ, it's a commercial off-the-shelf software. It's readily available. Anyone who's interested, you know, you can go online, you can check it. It is the same software used by many private companies for their infrastructure protection. For the workflows Renee was talking about, you know, one of the challenges we have is that a lot of time when you are responding, you have to look into so many different databases and so many different applications. This application is going to automate a lot of those workflows. How you respond, who do you need to contact, what application you need to check, what procedure you need to apply, what standard operating procedure you need to follow, all those things are going to be integrated into the workflows. So if there is an oil spill truck, you know, at 880 southbound, you will have the entire workflow defined. You know, who do you need to call, what application you need to launch, what citizens' area in the GIS mapping you need to activate the emergency notifications. All those things are going to be integrated into this whole system.
Thank you. So, Mr. Domingo, too, if you could follow up on that. So in the way that Mr. Bag is describing the use of the DAC, again, I'm not following the need for 24/7 monitoring. And as you answered that question, the other question that I had had to do with the payment for maintenance of the system within the 24 months and then after the 24 months.
Within the 24 months, part of the funding that we have received from the port, or would receive from the port once the council approves the resolution, is port security funding. Again, we have funding for operation and maintenance for two years following the full operation of the system, so through 2016. After that, then the city and the port would have to determine how to pay for the operations and maintenance.
And again, the issue of 24/7, it's very clear to me to have the DAC operational for fires, for earthquakes, for terrorism attacks, for these things, as Mr. Bag had described, when you need to integrate this information. If there's a critical attack on our port, or an oil spill on the 880, I could see operationalizing the DAC if there's a child abduction case and we have an idea to believe that somebody is in the port area. What I'm concerned about is when you describe a 24/7 operation around the DAC and the justification for that level of staffing in an ongoing capacity.
Yes, ma'am. The Domain Awareness Center is just that. It provides overall situational awareness, not only for the city, but for the port. Oakland's Domain Awareness Center is different from most Domain Awareness Centers. Most Domain Awareness Centers are either port-centric, which means that they're doing the 24/7 monitoring for the port area only, or they're either law enforcement-centric, which means that the law enforcement agencies are just monitoring the system. In the city-port Domain Awareness Center, it's a combination of both. And domain awareness has to do with having full visual situational awareness of what's going on on the water, in the port area, in the city, and that's why the 24/7 component comes into play. Domain awareness is to help prevent and mitigate, as well as respond to emergencies when they occur.
Madam attorney, just a few more questions...
Did you have further questions?
To beg my colleagues' indulgence. The other thing that I'm curious about with respect to the cost of the system, the grant that we would receive from the federal government, does it mandate this expanded scope in terms of 24/7 monitoring? Is that required by the grant, and is that why Oakland is utilizing it that way?
That is the way that the grant proposal was written when we were approved for the funding. And that is normally the way that Domain Awareness Centers operate on a 24/7 basis.
So then the question, again, forgive my scattered, I was trying to take lots of notes here. The question came up earlier from the public participants about cost overruns. Can you describe the nature of the contract that we would be entering into with the contractor, and how cost overruns, or potential cost overruns, will be handled by the grant? Is there potential or opportunity that any cost overruns, either in Phase One or Two or in the deployment, would be fiscal liability or obligations of the city?
We have to stick to the budget that we are given by the grant. So it is a fixed-price contract that we will be entering into for Phase Two, so the potential for cost overruns does not exist.
Madam Chair, I want to just pause for a second so that we can get a motion to extend the meeting past midnight.
Yes, thank you.
We are well past our deadline here.
Is there a motion to...
So moved.
On favor?
Thank you so much.
Aye. Okay. And so we have that. And if folks would please keep in mind that if you would notice, the council members are actually asking many of the questions you'd asked to have asked, so if you would please give them the courtesy of allowing them to ask the questions and hear the answers, it would be very helpful for everyone involved.
And, Mr. Domingo, and this will, I will let this be my last question and yield to my colleagues. On page two of the staff report, when you lay out the phasing, it is my understanding, based on the resolution, that there's a check coming back to the council before there's any implementation, or actually activating the system to go live?
Yes, we will be back in April to provide an informational report regarding the project's status and the status of any memorandums of understanding with either Caltrans, BART, or AC Transit. And we will also be coming back to city council for the approval of the draft DAC system-specific policies and guidelines regarding data, video, records retention, data safeguarding, and ensuring privacy laws are upheld. The system would not go live until June 30th of 2014, and/or until approved by the city council in terms of the policies and procedures that are developed.
Okay. I did have a couple of questions for the city attorney, but I'll wait.
Okay. Councilmember Gago.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone's input, but I am going to support staff's recommendation with the Domain Awareness Center. All right? All right. You know, just like I listened to you, but just take, won't you wait a minute? Wait a minute. That's all right, that's all right. Just like you want to have courtesy back, and you talk about, now wait a minute, wait a minute. You spoke for a whole hour. All right, then just, right. Staff members, could you, could you...
Excuse me, if everybody has a right to speak...
Yeah, let's talk about democracy, right? You want to talk about democracy?
This is his turn.
Let's talk about it. All right. Let's go ahead. I'm going to shine the camera on you right now. All right. Look, so the question that I have is, one is, you know, there's a grade... There's a grade, okay, there's, one is, I want to make sure for the record, one is I've been through emergencies with this city, and I've sat in my school size dealing with the emergency, and, wait a, can you just wait a second? I didn't interrupt you. Okay, don't interrupt me. So my, so the question that I have for you, I want you to, I want you to make it very clear for the record, because I heard you say it two, three times, in terms of what the process would be to roll this out. Because you mentioned privacy, privacy rules, before anything gets done, those will be implemented with a committee structure to clearly define them, it could be ACLU involved in it, to clearly define what the privacy regulations are. Can you redefine what your proposal and recommendation is?
Excuse me, excuse me, let's be clear on our rules here. When you sign up to speak, you get to speak. When it's the council members' turn to speak, you have to let them speak and hear the answers. This will be useful information in any case, and it is important to let everyone have a chance to be respected.
So you can restate your recommendation in terms of what you're looking for approval?
Our recommendation is that, staff's recommendation is that the city council approve and adopt the resolution that authorizes the city administrator or her designee to enter into a memorandum of understanding and a grant administration agreement with the port of Oakland for the distribution of the supplemental FY 2009 and 10 Port Security Grant for Phase Two of the system enhancements and integration of the Joint Port-City Domain Awareness Center, with the modifications that have been put forward by the council members in terms of modifying what the original resolution language was. Once again, the purpose of the Domain Awareness Center, the most important purpose of the center is to save lives by coordinating real-time information to our first responders and providing a common operating...
Hey, excuse me, yelling out like that is not acceptable. You can have opinions, you can state opinions, you must, you can be against what is being said, but you have to allow everyone their opportunity.
So with that, considering we cannot be heard, with that, I'd like to make a motion to support staff's recommendation with all the, with all this stated parts of the motion. Thank you. Amen.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that. With what?
I am making a motion...
Does it include this? Your mic is off.
So your mic's not on?
I am making a motion to support staff's recommendation with all the inclusions that she just stated regarding the privacy and all the amendments that are being presented.
And everything that was handed out.
That's what I'm supporting. If you, can you restate, can you restate?
There's a motion. Okay, I hear a motion.
I have one...
Is there a second?
I have one, one question that might involve a tiny modification...
Councilmember Schaaf, please.
Because it's a legal question. So I have a question for the city attorney.
City attorney, yes? Okay.
I think it's received. So, and council member called, you know, the, my name and council member Gibson McLaheny's name is on this language, so I just want to be sure that if you're modifying this language, that we're all on board with this. As I understand it, you have added the language to the second resolved paragraph that the privacy policy must be in place both for the city-port Domain Awareness Center and for all city and port data information sources. And I fully support us doing that for city data sources, city data and information sources. I guess I just have a legal question, because my understanding is that the charter tasks the port commission with the policies for the port, and so do we have the authority to require, to bind the port with regard to things that are purely, that are not, that are outside of the DAC, and that are their own operations, their own data systems?
So council member, to answer your question, you're right, the city charter states very clearly that the port commissioners have authority, exclusive authority over port facilities, operations, and management. But I think this resolution and the whereasings and resolves would be valid because they only reference the port cameras as they relate to the DAC. So it's a program, the port is a grantee, we're a sub-grantee. If not, I think we can add qualifying language and say it to the extent allowed by law.
Okay. I would feel comfortable with "to the extent allowed by law," or we could also say that we urge the port to adopt these. I just was concerned that we're, I don't want us to...
I think you're right.
Do something that's outside our legal authority.
To the author of the...
I wanted to clarify, no, I appreciate the question. It was my intention after discussion that the additional language that you just referenced and asked a question about, it was my intention to have that in the final paragraph and not in that second-to-last paragraph, which I think would help address any concerns.
And I apologize, because I didn't, my staff had my copy of our language, so when you read your modifications, I couldn't write them down.
Oh, yeah, no, I got you.
So I don't have them.
Would you read it again, just so we're all clear?
Yes, I will. Thank you. Through the chair, or through the, yeah, I'll read them. Okay, in the, in the third paragraph, which is the second resolved clause, it will say, the city-port Joint Domain Awareness Center system video data recording, comma, storage, and video analytics capability has not been activated, and then continues. And then in the, yeah, so that's the sum total for that paragraph addition. In the final paragraph, the final resolved clause here, it says towards the end, the third line from the bottom, where it says that "at the addition of any new surveillance, security sensor, or video analytics capability feed or data sources shall require approval of the council, including confirmation of compliance by the Domain Awareness Center and all city and port data and information sources with the city's privacy policy." So that's kind of going forward, so it doesn't put the port on the hook for the stuff in the past. But anyway, that's my, and I think the clerk has a written copy that I just articulated in a nice neatly, unusually neat handwriting.
All right, thank you. Maybe we should put a comma after the word "capability."
Yeah.
Okay. So with that, I feel comfortable with that, and I just want to say why I'm supporting this motion. I'm happy to second your motion now. I second your motion. And I want to say that I think we have done a great job...
Excuse me, it is Councilmember Schaaf's turn to speak. It is her turn to speak now.
There's something wrong with her mind.
You are entitled to your opinion. It is nonetheless her turn to speak.
There is something wrong with my, there is something, hey, I'm just gonna, I'm an awful... There is something wrong with my mind, because I spent my day at the funeral of an eight-year-old. I spent my day at the funeral of an eight-year-old little girl.
You cannot abide by the rules, you will have to leave. It is, everybody gets their turn, it is now her turn.
And I'm going to say my little piece. We have tried our best to find the sweet spot, where we are going to take advantage of the tools that we have at hand to make our city safe, primarily in emergencies, but in other ways, and at the same time, try and address the really legitimate and important concerns that have been raised. And I do want to, again, thank the ACLU for educating us, and I invite you to continue to educate us about how we can best be sure that we are utilizing these tools in a responsible way. But if we do not approve this money tonight, we jeopardize losing valuable resources that will make the city of Oakland safer. And that is why we must move forward tonight, we've got to take advantage of these tools, and I am looking forward to doing that tonight. We have done everything we can to safeguard privacy in light... We have done everything that we can to safeguard privacy without in any way jeopardizing the timing and the effectiveness of this tool. Thank you.
Okay. So you've moved it, it's been seconded. Are all of the authors comfortable and have clarity on the content?
I just think it's worth noting for the public that the additional, the additional language in the further resolved clauses makes it that the DAC will not be operational until the privacy policies have been vetted and approved. The only thing that I would like to add is a couple of things as we're thinking through the policy pieces, and hopefully we'll see you on or before the February check-in with respect to these policies. But I think that there's something to be really said about the abuse of the system, and to make sure that any personnel who would be caught abusing the system or utilizing it in ways that were not contemplated, that we would also have some strong language, that it may not be added in this resolution, we haven't had an opportunity to vet that with the city attorneys, but I'm looking for...
For that to be in what comes back?
And that was not in my earlier comments with respect to making sure, when one of the speakers talked about the voyeurism and all of those kinds of things, I think that we need to make sure that personnel policies, in addition to the privacy policies, are modified with this technology. I think that we really need to make sure that we're, that we are trying to make sure that our policies that protect workers and also protect citizens keep up with the technology that is out there. And I understand that, I understand that, it's also, I want to just be clear for the people who are participating in this meeting, not in the chambers, to understand that this body does not regulate the school district, does not regulate the federal government. There's been a lot of collapsing of, we should take this grant and pay for the schools, or that we have to do those other things. I think it's really important that we're very clear that this money is not for that, and that we need to be able to utilize the resources in the way that they've been designed.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you for that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. As amended.
All right, we're moving to the next item now. We are moving to item 36, with the clerk... We are moving to the next item, and ladies...